Talked about their coach in the school. So we wish them well. They're going to have some eighth graders going up to the high school that's going to look very strong basketball-wise, and they hope to repeat next year. So wish them well. The other item I have this morning is I want to give some kudos to our Dare folks, Currituck, Tarrell, Mans Harbor. Everybody's aware of the warehouse misfortune fire on February 27th. And keep your thoughts and prayers in line for Manteo Furniture. That was a total loss there. But the most fortunate out of this is there were no employees hurt, neighbors, or firefighters. But we had all the municipalities, even Currituck, Tarrell County, and hats off to our firefighters that took care of that and put that blaze out. Just keep the folks at Manteo Furniture in your thoughts and prayers. And then last but not least, tomorrow's a big day. Primary election, March the 5th. If you've not voted in early voting, which you certainly had plenty of time to do, two and a half weeks, if you haven't voted yet, I encourage you to go vote. That's all I have, county manager. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, which are our service pins. We have two today. First, we have Stephanie Bowers to receive a 10-year pin from Chuck Wasette.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Stephanie Bowers. She's our administrative assistant down in the Frisco office. She keeps the office running down there. More importantly, she keeps me posted on the weather conditions and the road conditions down there. Stephanie works for both Health and Social Services, combined DHHS down at the Frisco office. She manages the public coming in and out. She manages the clinic when the clinic's open. She answers questions. Even when she's not there, she's still answering questions. She started with Dare County back in 2008 under Sheila Davies. She did a graduate practicum experience with the Health Department back then. From October 2008 to May of 2009, she was a project coordinator on the Childhood Obesity Project. She conceived and initiated the Dare Unplugged, a collaborative, community-wide campaign to reduce TV computer screen time. From August of 2009 to October 2010, Stephanie served as the volunteer coordinator for Dare Respite Care and Hospice, where she initiated and inaugurated Dare County Alzheimer's Walk and organized caregiver education with the Alzheimer's North Carolina Incorporated. She left Dare County employment for a little while, and then she returned in 2013, working for the state, providing onsite support for the NCFAST system, which is the statewide computer system that's used by Economic Services. After her time there ended, she rejoined Dare County. We were impressed with her work, and she joined us as a social worker in the Family Services Unit. After four years as a social worker, she decided to move to the Frisco office and has been a huge asset to us down there. She's compassionate, reliable, and committed to our community. We thank Stephanie for her 10 years, and we hope for many more. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Both of us? Next, Corinne Etheridge will receive her 20-year pin from Becky Hoff.
Welcome this morning, ladies.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to present Corinne with her 20-year pin. Corinne started with Dare County in 2004 as a deputy register of deeds. Prior to that, starting in 1985, through the time she started working for the county, she worked for Meekins Land Survey, where she gained invaluable experience doing -- she was a drafts person. She did survey orders. She did deeds and maps. She pretty much did a little bit of everything there, which gave her a really good background to come in 2004 to the Register of Deeds office. She worked there for 10 years. In 2014, with both the land surveying and the register of deeds gave her exceptional qualities to bring her in as legal assistant in the tax collections office. Corinne is responsible for our -- she is the liaison for our foreclosure attorney. She handles and manages all of the bankruptcies. She is also in charge of all of our garnishments and attachments that we do as part of our collection procedures. She is responsible for the high-dollar number of delinquencies. She starts at the very top and starts working her way down in January, once they start going delinquent. She's a valuable asset to get our collection rate where it usually is every year for you guys. She is certified through the North Carolina Tax Collectors Association. She has a paralegal certification, and I am just very, very grateful to have her. She can do in 30 minutes what it takes me three days to do when it comes to deed work. So I am extremely grateful to have her. Here goes Corinne.
Thank you.
Our employee of the month was unable to be here today, so we'll move on to item four, and this is an EMS presentation. And Jenny, if you'd come forward, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jenny.
Commissioner's, county staff. For those of you, I know that you probably know this gentleman, Rick Prost of the local Post 10-950 for the VFW. Annually, the VFW selects public servant awards, and they go to fire department, EMS, law enforcement, and they have a new one, Explosive Ordnance Device Technician. But each year, the Post, our local Post, considers nominations for these prestigious awards. And then across the state, those awards are going to -- for a state-level award, and then they go on to a national-level award. Happy to announce that Post 10-950 winner for the Emergency Medical Technician Public Service Citation is paramedic James Wilmeth, who's here today and doesn't know about this until now.
Also, I would like to let everyone know that he was also selected as the Department of North Carolina VFW Paramedic of the Year and will be receiving a certificate and award for that at our convention in June. From there, he goes to the National Convention, or the National -- and will be competing against the other 49 states, Puerto Rico, and the European Theater for National Medic of the Year.
Wow.
And would you like to read his bio?
Sure. He worked last night, so I had to tell a little tale to get him here this morning. But let me tell you a little bit about James. He's been a paramedic with us since 2017 and currently is assigned to Dare MedFlight as one of the flight medics. He draws on his extensive experience with EMS. He has worked for other agencies across the United States, and he's also been a veteran with the California Army National Guard. As a paramedic, he's extremely proficient and dedicated to his craft. He has an in-depth knowledge of medication, physiology, and critical care, and even his peers actively seek him to help with his knowledge sharing and to work on things that they may be struggling with. So he is one of our go-to trainers for some of our highly specialized equipment, such as our ventilators and our IV pumps. He is known for his patience and effective communications with all levels of EMS providers, whether a paramedic or the newest EMT coming out of class. He's approachable. He adapts to the individual's learning styles, and he's one of our select few that are a field training officer on the helicopter also. He has a great initiative. We sent him to a conference about two years ago, and he came back with an idea of how to implement something locally. He put together a proposal with his partner, which included a feasibility assessment, identifying challenges along with possible solutions. And then last year, at our MedFlight Open House, he thought it would be a good idea that the public would have an interest in what the night vision goggles do for our flight crew and how they aid them in seeing the night operations. So he developed a prop, complete with a scene on the inside, but if you looked through it without the aid of night vision goggles, it just looked totally black. And then you put on the night vision goggles, and you could see everything inside, which replicates how the crew operates at night. So in conclusion, James, exceptional qualities ranging from leadership, mentorship, clinical expertise, and community impact has been formally recognized by the VFW. His dedication to the profession and his significant contributions to our team and the patient's reserve are deserving of this recognition. And so James will be invited to the banquet in Greensboro for the state-level award also, and congratulations.
And I'd like to present him with this certificate. Paramedic James Wilmeth of Dare County, North Carolina. A special recognition of exemplary service to humanity in administering emergency medical assistance. I'd like to present you with this certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, sir.
And you will be notified by the Department of North Carolina about the banquet shortly, I hope, and I wish you luck at the national level.
Thank you very much, sir.
Before we go to public comment, those of you all that received awards this morning, if you would go right out here with Caitlin to get a picture made, please. I'll wait just a second for everybody to clear. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for public comment. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand. I'll recognize you when I do. Please come to the podium. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up there that'll come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that will come on when there's about a minute left, and there's a red light that will come on when your time is up. I have four signups, and so we'll go down the signup sheet. First is Adrian Palmer.
Good morning, Ms. Palmer. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Adrienne, and I've been a Manteo resident since 2005. I'm here to ask you to revisit providing a lifeguard at the Old Swimming Hole or at another location on Roanoke Island. Up until last year, one of the joys of summer had been swimming at the Old Swimming Hole. I emailed all of you last June regarding this issue, and I want to thank Bob and Bobby for speaking to me at that time. I was told the area was deemed unsafe. What do we need to do to make it safe? I'm well aware of the two unfortunate drownings in July 2020. I was there that day and was the one who called 911. At the time of that tragedy, there was not a lifeguard on duty, and there were no buoys surrounding the hole. After that, buoys were installed, and there were not any other issues. In 2018, a four-year-old boy died in Kitty Hawk after being swept away by a wave. Was that area deemed unsafe? I was also told the hole is getting deeper. What is deep? What is required to make it safe? During the summer of 2022, the lifeguards at the Old Swimming Hole were directed by you to keep a daily attendance count. Why was that? The issue is there is no place to swim on Roanoke Island with a lifeguard. Families enjoy this activity as well as athletes training for the triathlon. I ask you to please give this issue another visit. I'm happy to work with you to make this area safe or find another location on Roanoke Island. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Virginia Rekanu. I hope I said that right. I'm sorry.
She has some pictures.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Virginia Rekanu. I live -- I've moved here in 2020. I'm a Army veteran. Currently, I am a nursing student at COA. The pictures that you're seeing are actually of one of the houses that's like next to where I live, and the pictures don't do it justice in the sense of there's a -- one of them, there's a window that's completely missing, and with the naked eye, when it's light, you can see that some of the ceiling has caved in, and it's like a really dilapidated home. And I brought this to the attention of the planning board, the -- well, with Noah. But when I spoke to Noah about it, he said that his hands are tied because there's no minimum housing code. But then, like, the fire that just happened kind of like made me realize, like, there's more safety issues. Like, I'm sure the -- where you house furniture would have a fire standard code that has to be up to date or whatnot, but there's nothing like that for a regular residence, even if it's a danger, not just to the people living in it currently, but even for, like, our paramedics or firefighters who have to go into these homes and rescue whoever is stuck inside. The owner of the home, I spoke to personally, so did my husband. His name is John Booth, and he used to build houses himself, and he's very well aware that the house, the condition of the home, is not suitable for people to live there. He has told us it is a complete teardown. So we're like, so why are people living there? Right? But then he follows that up. So he'll send people out there to, like, clean a little bit up or whatnot, and then, like, just to get us off his back type of style thing, and then it just stops. And this is just one home. I imagine if this is one that I'm aware of, there's several others. And so I went to speak to Social Services, and I asked them, hey, is there anything that you guys can do about it? And he told me, he said, you wouldn't believe some of the conditions of these other homes, as well as, like, from what I had showed him as well. So -- and then, I spoke, like, a few months ago, I had spoken to one of my fellow students, and she's a paramedic, and she had said one of the reasons she is no longer wanting to be a paramedic had been because you wouldn't believe the condition of some of these homes that they send you into. So my question is, can we get, like, a minimum housing code or something that'll help alleviate some of this stuff? Because it's, like, dangerous and not okay. That's about it. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Maynard Miller.
Welcome, Mr. Miller. Good morning. My name is Maynard Miller. I live at 133 Breakwood Road in Manteo, with my wife for 25 years on Roanoke Island. Now, I am actually, guys, I'm from the silent majority, okay? That is before the baby boomers. So I really don't have a horse in this race. But over the 25 years, simply put, I got a bunch of families right around me on Breakwood with about a total of seven or eight children. And I see every day the children riding their bikes to school. Everything's working fine. But I believe that -- and you guys got a big job, and thankless in many cases. But a kid should be able to get on a bike and ride to a public beach location with a lifeguard and swim there on Roanoke Island somewhere. Now, I know that between the resources that are in this county, if this is an issue for the general population on Roanoke Island and the governing bodies on Roanoke Island, I think this can be resolved. I don't believe it is a subject other than quality of life. We can certainly do without it, but I wouldn't want to, and that's my story. Now, with that said, I got a bunch of handouts, and I believe everybody got some. I will make this noticeable to the general population on Election Day and this week because I don't believe too many people know about it. You know, children cannot ride a bike to the beach. If you want to get to the water to swim and short of a swimming pool, you have to get in a vehicle and go across the car's way and find your way around to go to a swimming hole. And I had a swimming hole when I grew up, and I think every kid should have one, if that's available. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You're back. Next is Katie Morgan.
All right. I feel better. I thought I only had three minutes. I have five. My name is Katie Morgan, and I want to start by saying thank you to the board for the dedication that y'all do have. But I am here today to raise a critical question. Why are the elected board, the elected Dare County commissioners persisting in their silence regarding pressing local matters? At the forefront of our concerns lies the House Bill 259, a measure that strips authority from all six towns in Dare County, granting complete control over affordable housing construction to the state without input from our local citizens or our elected town officials. In the face of this substantial governmental overreach and the profound erosion of local autonomy, our Dare County commissioners have offered nothing more than a resolution devoid of legal weight, a mere symbolic gesture lacking substantial support. It is striking to me that our county commissioners have neglected to publicly advocate for the interests of our towns, leaving them without vocal representation or support. Presently, all six towns in Dare County find themselves embroiled in a lawsuit against the state regarding this bill. Yet, our county commissioners have chosen to abstain from joining their towns in this legal battle, maintaining a conspicuous silence and advocating for its citizens before the General Assembly. There has been a glaring absence of effort from our county commissioners in uncovering the origins of this bill or raising awareness about its far-reaching implications. Where is the outcry from this board? Where is the passionate advocacy for our citizens' rights and interests? Another topic we should be deeply concerned about is the silence surrounding the critical issue of Jockeys Ridge. It pains me to witness the potential loss of its Area of Environmental Concern designation without any public acknowledgement from our elected representatives at the county level. In essence, the potential loss of Jockeys Ridge looms before us. The town of Nags Head and the Friends of Jockeys Ridge have done a great job in keeping residents in the know. The absence of proactive measures regarding Jockeys Ridge undermines our faith in the integrity of our county governance. As residents of Dare County, we should reasonably expect that our commissioners would prioritize our well-being above personal conflicts of interest. It's disheartening to no longer feel secure or supported by our elected county officials. I hope the upcoming primaries will serve as a stark reminder that many citizens have lost faith in our current leadership. I encourage every citizen in Dare County to attend the next Housing Task Force meeting on March 19th to express your feelings, and I encourage all concerned citizens to start really paying attention to what is going on with Jockeys Ridge and its designation. Things are moving rapidly as of late, and it is crucial for our community to actively pursue accountability from both our stakeholders and elected officials. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that'd like to speak at public comment? Any other public comment this morning? Seeing none. Any comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public comment. That takes us to item six on the agenda. This is a public hearing to request the close of an unimproved extension of Washington Street on Roanoke Island. And Noah, if you'd come forward and present that to the board.
Good morning.
Good morning, Noah.
Chairman, commissioners, received a request to close unimproved extension of Washington Street approximately 230 feet long, 60-foot right-of-way. As part of the original plating of Roanoke Park extended, this portion of the road was never improved. There's two affidavits in your packet from the adjoining property owners who have submitted the request to close this pursuant to General Statute 153A-241. In there, there's also a map of the area that shows the unimproved extension that they're requesting to be closed, a resolution for your adoption, and an attachment that should be included with that resolution if it's a favorable motion. And one of the applicants, Michael Davenport, is here this morning as well, if you have any questions of the applicant.
With that, we would conduct a public hearing. This is a public hearing to close a portion of Washington Street on Roanoke Island pursuant to NCGS 153A-241. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak to that issue? Please state your name and where you're from.
Michael Davenport from Manteo, North Carolina. Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners. And I am one of the applicants on this, along with Edgar and Ruth Mallory next door. I purchased this property in 2023, this past summer, and after a meeting with a neighbor, we talked about what to do with Washington Street so we could have good access to the lots that I want to build on in there, and also it would improve and enlarge his yard as well. You've got the package there in front of you. There are three lots that I have on that street, on the unimproved street, that I'd like to be able to put in a driveway so eventually I can build on that property. So you have the documentation, and I was going to see if y'all have any questions from me as the applicant.
I'll defer to the board. Any questions, Board?
I have a question about the -- I'm sorry. Yeah.
Let's close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Anyone else like to speak?
Thank you.
At the public hearing? You can stay right there if you'd like, Mike. Any public comment on this from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
All right, with that, we close the public hearing, and now it's appropriate for questions.
Okay.
Commissioner Bass?
I just wanted to ask about, in looking at the maps, the John Elliott Wood, which is at the end of that paper road, is that back up to the middle school? Is that what I'm looking at on that map?
That is now the school property. That's a prior, you know, historic plat. Currently, that is the middle school property.
So the John Elliott Wood that's marked on the map is part of the school property?
Today, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, Mike. County manager?
That's it, Mr. Chairman. It's for you to either approve or disapprove.
Okay. Hearing none then. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bassnight and, I believe, Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none then on the motion. Signify, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Can that bring us to item seven on the agenda. This is an amendment to SGP number 6-2020, issued to the Dare Challenge for a group development, and we need to get the witnesses sworn. Thanks, just.
An updated site plan was submitted for the Dare Challenge property located on Highway NC 345 on your way into Wine Cheese. Back in January of 2021, y'all approved a special use permit for the expansion of the Dare Challenge campus to include two new dormitories, staff housing, and a multipurpose building. In review, building plans, when they were submitted for the construction of one of the dormitories, we noticed that there was a discrepancy in the plans and the site plans. Well, at the time of the original submittal for the special use permit, they weren't entirely certain on the layout of the dormitory buildings. And in the design process, they realized that the one-story proposed, as it was back in 2021, would not meet their needs, and they wouldn't be able to get the number of occupants they had intended that building to house. So they added a second story to the building, doubling its square footage, and the other second proposed dormitory. And in doing so, they reduced lot cut, or they reduced the multipurpose building square footage and increased the staff housing square footage. The special use permit language requires that if there's an increase or a change in a site layout that results in an increase in square footage to buildings or increase in lot covers, that it must come back before y'all for approval. So that's what we're here today to do, is to amend the special use permit for their new site plan and the increased square footages of the buildings. new site plan and the increased square footages of the buildings.
Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from anyone?
Is there anyone here to put on evidence with regard to this matter this morning? Anyone else here? With that, the file and the evidence that Noah has presented would be the evidence for you to act on the SGP.
I move the amendments to the SGP 6-2020, and updated site plan for Dare Challenge's group development be approved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chair. It's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
We'll stay right there. Next is the Edge Campus State Subdivision. This is a preliminary plat review, and turn it back over to you, Noah.
A preliminary plat for a subdivision in Waves has been submitted. It's a non-lot subdivision. The applicant is requesting the use of shared drives or common drives. They're permitted in the subdivision ordinance, subject to the Board of Commissioners' approval to determine that the use of shared driveways does not endanger or diminish public safety and welfare. It's a non-lot subdivision. Eight of the lots have frontage on Highway 12. To reduce the number of driveway cuts in that area, they're proposing the use of three shared drives. One would, one shared drive would access lots one through three, another would access four and five, and the final one would access lots six through seven. The plat is attached to my staff memo that shows the shared drives. Those shared drives would have to be improved to support the load of fire apparatus and emergency vehicles at 75,000 pounds. The shared drives, all of them are 35 to 45 foot in length, and from the end of that improvement, it would all branch out to singular driveways to service the individual lots. And there's a representative here of the subdivision, if anybody has any questions of the applicant.
Anybody have any questions?
Just want a clarification.
Okay.
These common drives, am I reading that they are 20 feet wide? In other words, if somebody pulling in with, ready for vacation, and there's somebody coming out, there's not going to be a recipe for an accident. If they're 20 feet?
20 feet is the minimum that the fire marshal in his review said that the pavement would have to be, would be 20 feet. The applicant can certainly go greater than that. That's just, that's up to the applicant about how much pavement he wants to, or plans to install. But yes, there would not be any situation of, you know, vehicle or traffic problems of somebody pulling in and somebody pulling out.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Well, Noah, I'm kind of hinging on the 20-foot wide.
Got any questions of him about it?
No, sir.
Anyone else? Then I'll ask the pleasure of the board.
I move the preliminary plat for the proposed Edge Campus State Subdivision be granted based upon a concurrence with the planning board recommendation that the three common drives accessing lots one to three, four to five, and six to seven does not endanger or diminish public safety and welfare.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman and Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, and those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda is Dare County Four Towns Beach Nurishment Project Grant Resolution. The legislature paid $10 million available from DEQ for grant dollars for all of North Carolina to be used for hazard mitigation, beach nourishment, and other ways to mitigate coastal storm damage. That would mean that we could apply, and each of the towns could apply as well. I met with all of the town managers and talked to them, and what we agreed on was rather than spend the money to do four applications or five applications, we would do one application for everybody, Dare County, we would do that. We've engaged Ken Wilson and his group to begin that process to, to do that. The application is due later this week, so this is the first opportunity to bring it to you, to get your approval. Our goal would be, if they're going to double it out, then we could get a greater share into the Beach Nurishment Fund if we did it for the towns as well as the county, as opposed to if each entity did it all by themselves. And so we're doing a larger group application for that. At the manager level, everyone's agreed that's fine. Several of the towns have met and have approved it. The others will meet before this is due on the 8th. Presumably, they'll approve as well, and assuming that they do, then we'll move forward with this. But this is to get your approval and adoption of these resolutions and things that we need to move that forward.
Pardon? Yeah, if you'd just read that resolution, if you would.
Sure. Whereas Dare County desires to sponsor the Dare County Four Towns Beach Nurishment Project to mitigate coastal storm damage to ocean beaches and dune systems. Dare County requests the state of North Carolina provide financial assistance to Dare County for the Four Town Beach Nurishment Project in the amount of $2.5 million. Dare County assumes full obligation for payment of the balance. The project costs, Dare County will obtain all necessary state and federal permits. Dare County will comply with all applicable laws governing the award of contracts and the expenditure of public funds by local governments. Dare County will supervise construction of the project to assure compliance with permit conditions and to assure safe and proper construction according to approved plans and specifications. Dare County will obtain appropriate easements, right-of-ways, or suitable dredge material disposal areas that may be necessary for the construction and operation of the project without cost or obligation to the state. Dare County will ensure that the project is open for use by public on an equal basis with limited restrictions on public property. Dare County will hold the state harmless from any damages that may result from the construction, operation, and maintenance of the project, and Dare County accepts responsibility for the operation and maintenance of the completed project this the fourth day of March 2024.
Okay, is that a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
This brings us to item 10 on the agenda, and this concerns our libraries. We're, we're a member of the East Albemarle Regional Library, and I'm going to call, y'all come on up, the East Lab, the East Albemarle Regional Library Group, and that's a consortium of the libraries in this area. And we've been a member of that over the years. Way back when Jonathan was still the librarian and the head of the Earl, we had some discussions at some point about the dissolution of the Earl and going forward alone. There were some pros and cons in, and we chose not to do it, and that's been several years ago. That issue's come back to the forefront again now among the counties that are involved. I think the presentation you're about to hear has been presented to the Earl Board as well as to our local library board. And we're at a point where you all need to hear what they have to say, understand what the issues are, and then we need to make some decisions on whether we go forward with the dissolution of the Earl or not. The, I think they'll tell you in a minute, but it's a year or more away, but in order to plan for it, get all the funding right, we've got to start making plans now. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Megan and Kim to fill you in and answer any questions that you have.
Good morning, ladies, and thank you for being here.
Good morning. My name is Kim Perry. I'm the East Albemarle Regional Library Director in the Pasquotank Library area.
And I'm Megan Leonard-Speasely. I'm your Dare County Librarian. It's nice to see you all.
Thank you for, for listening to us today. Just as a little background, East Albemarle Regional Library, or as we refer to it as Earl, was formed in 1964, and it is to provide service for, library service for Camden, Currituck, Dare, and Pasquotank Counties. It's been in existence since then, and traditionally, the member counties sign a 10-year agreement, just agreeing that we're going to continue. In June of 2023, as, as was referenced before, we knew things were, were maybe not sustainable, so the counties agreed to, to sign a three-year regional agreement while we consider the things that I'm going to put before you today. And part of the reason we decided to, to go forward with the three-year agreement was the regional library system received state financial recovery funds, SFRF, or sometimes referred to as ARPA, ARPA funds, to help sustain the libraries as a result of things that happened during the COVID closures. Those funds have to be expended by December 31st, 2026, and this three-year agreement allowed Earl time to expend those funds, and those funds do benefit all four counties. Our current Earl contract runs from July 1, 2023, to June 30th, 2026. So that's the time period we're talking about here. Part of what helps our libraries run is state aid. We receive, as part of Earl, or counties can receive state aid from the State Library of North Carolina. We apply annually, and the application is either received, either approved or denied. There are 12 eligibility requirements that either as a region or as a county, or, and as a county, you have to, you have to hit to get that state aid on an annual basis. There are three requirements that are very important when we're looking at it from a regional library point of view. The first, you have to employ a full-time library director, and full-time means you're working a minimum of 35 hours per, per week. That means that each of our county libraries have to have a full-time director, and Earl has to have a full-time director. We'll talk about this in a little bit, but one, one of the ways we're working against, working with our financial limitations is one person serves in a dual role. Jonathan Warwick had served in the dual role in the past. I'm serving in that dual role right now. So we have four professionals for four counties. Another point of state aid is that we do have to secure operational funds from our local government, from you guys. Every year, Dare County does approve a budget for the library, and that's, that's what has to be maintained on a three-year rolling average to ensure that you're receiving state aid from the public, state aid from the state library, but the state, the state library also wants to see that the communities are supporting your local libraries. And one thing that had been a real barrier to even considering leaving the regional agreement is that in order to get out of the regional agreement, each of the counties have, has to prove or demonstrate that they can successfully run a, a public library. And part of that requirement is that you have to do the demonstration year, or you have to go through a demonstration year without receiving any state aid. And nobody wanted to do that because state aid is a, a big part of your budget. So throughout this year, we have worked with the state library, had discussions, they've worked with their attorneys, and they've come up with an exception that Earl, all the Earl counties can successfully leave the regional agreement and receive state aid without any interruption. And that was the moment that a smile came on our faces. We were like, okay, we see a path that this could work for everyone. There are, are three really important things that we have to do in order to, to make these two things with the demonstration year and receiving state aid concurrently and without any interruption. We have to make sure they happen. We have to meet all the requirements of that, of those 12 points on July 1 of the year prior to the fiscal year in which the library plans to receive state aid. We have to continue to meet all those requirements from this section from July 1 to June 30 of that year. That's also called our demonstration year. And we're going to have to, Dare County will have to, Megan will have to, file a full application for state aid by June 30. By June 30 really means probably by December of 20, or January of that prior year, so the state library can process it appropriately and be sure that Dare County will be ready to receive that state aid as of July 1. So, so those are very important points to make sure that state aid continues to flow in uninterrupted, and the state library, as well as all the county librarians, are dedicated to making that happen. Want to talk about maintenance of effort? Or you prefer not to?
You're doing such a good job.
You sure?
Kim's given this talk so many times now, I trust her to, to just fly through it.
If you want to jump in anywhere, you can feel free to. Maintenance of effort is something that's very important from the state library's point of view and from library service point of view. It's, it's really the requirement that public libraries receive operational funds from local governments. And when the state library looks at that level of funding, it needs to increase, at least remain level or increase, and they look at a three-year rolling average. They understand that budgets can fluctuate a little bit, but over the course of a, a three-year average, they want to make sure that, that our counties are supporting the libraries either at or above that rate. That's currently part of what we do when we're applying for state aid on a regional library. Point from a regional library point of view, we supply this information to the state library every year, but the difference will be that they'll be looking at Dare County specifically, not all four of our counties combined in the future, if, if we agree to go in this direction. There is a sort of a slap on the wrist if you decide that you're not going to fund your libraries appropriately, and you, and the county decides that they're going to drop the funding, the state library will drop your amount of state aid by that amount. So they really encourage libraries to at least continue funding at or above the level you're at right now. And just so, so you can look at and see what your maintenance of effort was for 2023, 2024, these are the figures that we supplied when we applied for state aid. Camden's, Currituck, Dare, and Pasquotank's maintenance of effort is, is listed there. Dare's was 1,265,755. So going forward, the state library would expect Dare to fund at or above that level. Any questions about maintenance of effort? All right, well, the state library has a formula, of course, for, for calculating state aid. And, and when they're looking at state aid, it's going to, the factors they use are the population, the per capita income, state aid allocation, and whether you've met that maintenance of effort in your prior three years. And the formula for the state library awarding state aid is 50% is allocated in a block grant, and then 50% is allocated in an equalization grant. Block grants go out equally among all the county libraries and some municipal libraries, and regional libraries do get an additional block grant. So right now, as an Earl library, we do get four, four state aid grants plus a fifth block grant. If you're a standalone county, you get one single. And your equalization grant, of course, is based upon a formula that, that takes into account the, the relative wealth of your county. And the equalization grant is based upon local community support, your service population, and your per capita income. Now we'll move on, if you'd like, to demonstration years. This was a big, big part of, of us being in front of you today, asking you to consider if you'd like to, to continue with the regional agreement, because typically when a regional library dissolves or, or is considering dissolution, the state library does require a demonstration year. And as I'd said before, that's the year that you have to prove you can provide library service, and there's typically no state aid available during that time. And that was a deal breaker a lot of times. This, this year, we've spent some time talking with the state librarian and other people at the state library, and they, they and their legal counsel have graciously offered the option for us to overlay the final year of Earl and the first year of, of application as a county library, so we can receive state aid in an uninterrupted fashion. And, and that would be, assuming that each of our county libraries successfully applies for state aid, we would say that we, we're going to apply for state aid during the 25, 26 cycle as independent counties, and ideally, we would be awarded state aid during the 26, 27 cycle as independent counties. Last year of Earl, it would come in for Earl. First year of independent libraries, it would come in directly to your counties. The state library is dedicated to helping us through this process. I have not weekly meetings, but regular meetings with people from the state library reviewing this timeline. reviewing this timeline, and everyone is confident that we can make this work, especially with our team that we have, have in place here. Now, if you'd like to, we can talk about Earl's state aid award and then the projected state aid to the counties. During fiscal year '23, '24, we had an increase in state aid. Initially, Earl's state aid was $393,631, and with an, an option of the budget, it was increased to $492,100. This increase in state budget and this new formula for state aid will, is, is what we're using to project what Dare County would receive in state aid following a dissolution. So part of the conversation was, tell us what we think we'd get after dissolution, so, so everyone can, can look at it. And so the, the projected state aid for each of our Earl counties is listed on the document that you received, and you can see that Dare County's projection for state aid is 105,526. So that's what ideally would go directly to the county post dissolution. Just as a note, that, that money must be held by your finance department in a separate budget line, and it has to be used only for the library. It's not, it's not to go into a general fund. Any questions?
Yeah, real.
Yeah.
Sorry. Real quick on that one.
No, go for it.
You have the '24 fiscal budget, 492 state aid, and if I add up the four numbers below, I get just over $400,000. Does that represent a cut to the four counties from the 492, 100?
It doesn't. It's because Earl gets that fifth block.
Huh.
As a regional library, we get five state aid blocks. When we divide into four counties, there'd be one block per county.
Right.
Isn't it 64,000? Isn't it approximately?
That's approximately how much is missing from the 492.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what's going to Earl right now.
So why doesn't that come to the four counties if we exit Earl?
Because, because the counties get a single block of state aid. Because we're a regional library, we get four blocks, one for each county, and then that one-
So Earl will remain, it's just these counties will be withdrawing from Earl?
No, Earl will, Earl would be in the long way.
Right. So if it goes away, why won't the funds come to the four counties? You're saying it's still Earl? I'm uncon-
Earl has a formula as the four-county group, and when you run that formula, the Earl gets money. When you divide it out, then the formula is run by each individual county. Because of where we are, our demographic, our number changes. We don't, it's not a pro-rata distribution, and so that, we do get money, as I understand it, right?
Earl, Earl gets an extra block of money.
This is extraordinarily easy to comprehend from up here. I want to just express my appreciation for all the simplicity of the formulas. Please, go ahead.
I was just going to say, for the, for existing, as a region, Earl gets an additional block grant, because the idea is that Earl would exist as an institution beyond those four grants that the counties get. But when Earl dissolves, there's no more Earl, so there's no more fourth, fifth grant.
Okay, so my question really was just trying to reconcile 492, 100 to the last bullet, which enumerated 1, 2, 3, 4 numerical grants by county. They add up to about $75,000 short of 492. So that money is gone.
Correct. And Earl is gone as well.
For the Earl, it doesn't exist.
Right.
And won't be given back to the four counties, because that doesn't make good sense, does it?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager and Attorney. Okay, thanks, ladies, I got it.
Just a question, sorry, just another question. Do all of the counties have to get out of Earl for Earl to go away? I'm assuming that's the case, but can individual counties get out and say, three counties stay regional, or two counties stay regional?
You've opened a whole nother, another conversation, but I'll be happy to talk about it. In order for a region to exist, the counties have to be contiguous. So Pasquetank could pull away, and Camden, Currytuck, and Dare can remain a region. Dare could pull away, Currytuck, Camden, and Pasquetank. So one, one can pull away, and the rest remain, as long as they, the ones that want to stay touch one another.
Mm-hmm.
Does that answer it?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
How many other regional library systems are there in the state?
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, that's, I know, put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but approximately?
12.
12, okay. And usually they're three to four counties, contiguous counties?
And, and they tend to be in the western part of the state, the eastern part of the state, and they're, they're formed for, for counties that, that needed some financial help to, to provide library service. So you, you kind of look at the demographics of the state, and you'll, and then a map with the regional libraries, and it becomes apparent when you look at the economic conditions.
Just because there's not a chart that shows this, but if Dare County were to pull out of Earl, right by itself, just Dare County decides to go on its own, do the numbers substantially change versus what we're getting under Earl versus what we're getting, what we would, would be getting as an individual county?
Well, right now, Dare doesn't receive, are, are you asking about state aid at this?
I'm asking about what, what would the total number, what would the net number be if we pull out and do it on our own versus what we're getting?
There's a net negative, it's going to cost us a little bit more. Megan, you gave me a number, I don't remember what it is, but it's not significant.
Maybe $5,000?
Okay, so the, the total number that we get in support with Earl, there's only a $5,000 difference if we go-
The total number we get from, or, the total number that we'll get from the state, plus the money that we already put into the library system, will be $5,000 or so short once dissolution, and so we'll have to augment that budget by around $5,000.
Okay.
And, and will that cover the, I know we have to pick up the position of the county library as a, a county employee, right, at that time?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we substantially do that already, right?
No.
We, we will do that already, that's included in that five, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there, is everybody together on this? I'm just going to try to say the word unanimity, but I'm not sure I'm saying you're right. Show off. It's my Adder's education coming in. I'm just, you know, if, if there's pushback from some of the other counties, I would, I'm not paranoid about this. Our libraries are well-used.
I have, I've met with all the other county managers, and we went through this and had a discussion, and, and they're all in favor of dissolving as well, so I don't think there's any disagreement among the, the members that this is the direction that we need to go in. Correct?
From standpoint of, sorry, I have to remember, turn, hit my button here. From a standpoint of operation, day-to-day operation, would you expect it to be smoother? No different? Worse?
In some regards, I think it would be a lot smoother. One of the points that we were going to get to is our integrated library system, which we currently share-
If I move over to the mic, so we can hear, your voice is soft.
Sorry. We currently use a shared library system, resources between our four counties, and what we would be-
You can go on and jump, but just do the part.
Right, so we currently have a system. Our cataloging, our borrowing services, our circuit, it's shared between the four counties, and the resources, we pool them and drive them around between our branches every week. What we're looking at doing is moving to a statewide system that would, at the time we joined, would probably encompass about 58 counties, over 8 million items versus the 130,000 that we share right now. And so we would actually be offering our patrons a much larger selection. We are working on fine-tuning how that will look, how we will move the books around, but from my perspective, I don't see any change that the patrons will notice. If anything, it'll be easier, it will hopefully be more streamlined, and it'll be beneficial to everyone involved, staff and patrons.
Megan, didn't you say the number of periodicals and things available would increase significantly as well?
Yes, that's where we'll go, from 130,000 to about 8 million items.
Wow.
Physical items to be borrowed.
And you personally support going, pulling out of the regional system?
I think they give us two options. I believe y'all giving us-
No, I'm asking for her personal opinion.
No pressure.
Now, before Jonathan left, he and I talked at length about this, it's not new to me, and we have had many discussions amongst the county librarians, and when you get down to it, Earl essentially is, is an administrative organization that has four employees, and we deal with some eBooks and some E-rate issues, and it doesn't seem to do what it was intended to do, what it was originally meant to do, which was to run a whole great big system of four county libraries, and it just doesn't serve that purpose anymore.
Not to put words in your mouth, but it's, it's served its time, basically, is, is, is what I'm taking from what you're saying.
That's definitely how I feel about it, Kim.
I, I agree. Regional library services, services can, can definitely be valuable to communities, and I think it has been of value to this, to our region throughout the years. But, but an administrative unit really is what Earl is. And just to clarify a slight bit, the state aid right now goes directly to Earl. It is not dispersed to your counties, it comes to Earl, and all the, Earl pays the four librarian salaries and benefits with that money. Does that help a little bit with the clarification of what state aid? I, I wanted to share that. And the other thing we do, Megan was mentioning the transition to NC Cardinal, which is the shared library management software. Earl manages the, the billing, and then we rebuild to the counties for TLC, which is our current library management software. And since that's a server-based system, we have to pay an IT person to, to work with that onsite. So that is part of what the Earl funds are used for, and if we transition to NC Cardinal, all that would be outsourced to the state. It wouldn't be a burden on your local IT support, it would just make, be an internet connection to, to use NC Cardinal locally. So I've batted around a lot of things there. State aid right now currently goes directly to Earl. Earl pays our salaries and our benefits, so we are not employees of the county. That would change. The state aid would go directly to Dare County, and Dare County would pay the librarian. So that's, that's a little bit of the flow of, of resources there. But a savings for the, the integrated library system, which, if we transition to Cardinal, right now, the, the TLC cost for Dare for this fiscal year are about $9,511. That does not include the IT support that we're providing locally. If, once you transition to Cardinal, the total cost will be $7,500. I didn't mention that Earl also covers the cost of courier vehicles and transportation among the, the counties. Dare County is currently providing staff members to do that, but Earl purchases the vehicle and the gas and the insurance to run those vehicles. The courier service among the Cardinal libraries throughout the state is done by UPS or FedEx. It's a, it's a contract that is negotiated by the state. That, those mailing charges are part of your $7,500 that you'd be spending annually to be a member of NC Cardinal. So we do have the option to run a local courier, and we're discussing that right now, because we may want to still transfer items among our four counties, but most of the, the cost of sharing resources with other libraries would be part of your, your annual Cardinal cost, and it's predictable, you pay it on the front end, and there are no surprise charges as the year goes through. So we see that as a real benefit.
Thank you, that, that helps me.
Okay.
The, you know, in Dare County, if you're down in Hatters and you, at the Hatters Library, and that's your go-to, and you need a, a book, say, on the Wright Brothers, and we don't have it there, so they've got one to kill double heels. Generally, we can have it in two or three days, but if somebody's a periodical, or a, a writer, or doing any kind of research, and say they need a book on moonshining in Camden, I mean, so that comes down, y'all would, how do we get that? Does it change anything? Does it make it later? Is it going to be UPS now, or?
Well, we are discussing amongst the four county librarians a way to keep a local courier going that would meet those needs between our collections. So, you know, it makes a lot of sense. So many people live in Currytuck and come to Dare for so many different reasons, and they come to our library when they do that. Same goes the other way, Pasquetank, Camden. There's still going to be a lot of inter-county sharing.
Cooperation.
Yes, cooperating, and we're talking about that, because it is still two years out, we don't have the finer details worked out, but we do acknowledge that we're going to have to continue to implement some sort of inter-county courier to meet those local needs.
Okay, not a big challenge, it's probably one that could be rectified. I'm good. Just another question in that regard. If, if, if Dare County decides to go, to pull out of Earl, and Currytuck pulls out of Earl, and the, the question, I guess, is, so we're part of the Cardinal system at that point, does the Cardinal system and the Earl system, if they have a book in, in Camden County, if they're still part of Earl, will you still exchange with them, or would they be a totally separate system at that time?
So we won't, there won't be an Earl, will be four separate counties, independent of one another.
No, no, no. You didn't understand my question. My question is, if they stay, if two counties up there stay in Earl, and, and we, and we are part of Cardinal, do you still exchange, or no more?
Well, if they stayed on the current system, then it would be those two counties sharing their collections with one another, anyone outside of those counties.
Right. So Cardinal stays within Cardinal, Earl stays within Earl.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
But with a million and some copies, it'd be unlike what Cardinal wouldn't have, if you wanted anyway.
Just, just, just wanted to ask a question.
Pardon? If, if, if you so wish.
I make a motion to end Earl and form an independent standalone library. Second?
Okay, motion's on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by the vice chairman. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much, ladies. Appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
We were getting there pretty deep. At some point, we had to call the vote. I mean, I'm sorry.
That brings us to item 11 on the agenda, and these are some resolutions approving financing terms, and I'll turn that over to Dave Clawson.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. These are actually two different debt financings. The first one is for the vehicles and a little bit of equipment that you had in this year's budget, from a lot of different departments, but most of it's EMS, ambulances, and sheriff vehicles. That one's $2,737,000. The second one is from the capital improvements plan. It is for public works equipment, which is sanitation, is garbage trucks, and some network equipment. That one's over 59 months. We took financing proposals and actually didn't get a lot, we got four. One was kind of non-responsive. They called it a coverage bid, which I think is so the bank could say that they bid technically. But the low bids, both were from Bank of America Public Capital Corp., which we've worked with before. The three-year rate is 4.26, which is actually higher than the 59-month rate, which is 4.04, and that, that makes sense, because we're in inverted yield curve, and you're going to see in a few minutes that the rate on our 20-year bonds we're looking at is around the 350 to 360. So those were the results we're asking you to adopt. Actually, the two resolutions in the packet authorize the county manager, the clerk to the board, and finance staff to execute all the necessary financing documents.
Is that it? Any questions, Dave?
Just one.
Go ahead.
In order to lock the rate, the county needs to notify Bank of America of acceptance by Feb. 28, which just passed. Are we in trouble there?
We're okay. Sally has talked to them about that, yes.
And it also says 2023.
Well, yeah, you're correct. Little, little slip typo there, we got that. I was worried about February 28th last week, so.
You're right.
But good catch, you're on it. I agree.
Yeah.
All right.
Do you want to hit, do you want to hit a resolution?
Yeah, I do. No, I'm good with the resolution. I've read it. I would make a motion, we approve that, both resolutions, actually, right, Dave?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion to approve both.
And also authorize the county manager and finance staff to execute all- And also authorize the county manager and finance staff to execute all necessary documents as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. That motion's on the floor by Commissioner Ross. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
I'm going to hit this first and then you fill in.
Okay.
Item 12 is the approval of our Phase II capital projects for the Manio Youth Center, the Kitty Hawk Elementary Station, the Kitty Hawk EMS station, and the Mans Harbor EMS station. I'd sent you all what's in your packet a week or 10 days ago to look at it. And in the meantime, we've had a CIP committee meeting as well, and we went through all this stuff. I'll hit the highlights real quick, and then if you have questions, please ask them. And then if there's anything I missed, Dave, please fill in. And Dustin's here as well for any other questions you might have. We got our bids in, and as I told you, as we expected, the cost rose. That's what's been normal, if anything's normal, with all of our projects so far.
I think it's normal.
Well, normal for us, normal for the construction industry. On your sheet, you've got the minimum, the Barn Hill guaranteed maximum prices. The total for the three projects is around $28 million. That's about $4.6 million more than what we had budgeted. We had some savings in Phase I of about $955,000. We have some interest earnings that were about $441,000. When you subtract those out, that means that the net amount that we need to complete those projects is an additional $3.234 million. So if you flip, you know, to the second page in your sheet, you can see you've got the original, in the first column, the original Oakley Collier estimates. The center column is, if you recall, back in October, Oakley Collier came and said, you need to expect when the bids come out, you're going to get an increase. And then the last column are, in fact, what the bid amounts are. The bad news is they went up from what our original estimates were. I guess the good news is they didn't go up as much as Oakley Collier had predicted. So that was a good thing as well.
Bobby, real quick, on the May 8 column, we didn't really have firm data. That was kind of an architect's estimate, was it not, Dave?
It's an architect's estimate before they started designing.
Which we knew was rough at the time.
Yeah.
All right.
It was trying to, we were trying to prevent surprises when we got to today.
Yeah, and it didn't work.
It didn't work, right.
It's a good try, though, Bobby.
Then on your third sheet, we have the cover.
Before we go to that one, I wanted to move us back just real quick to page 82 in the deck. Dave, that's where we show the ratio or percentage coverage?
That's where I was headed.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That was before the.
Yeah. On the coverages, as you know, our policy is we need 1.0, a coverage ratio of 1.0. Using the original CIP that we did, we met that condition all the way till like 2042. If you, over the last 10 years, we've had 13% growth in our fund. Over the last 20 years, we've had 3.18% growth in that fund.
The land transfer tax.
This is the land transfer tax.
Yeah, LTT, right, the growth rate.
So when we went to run the models to see what the coverages would do, Dave ran it first with a quarter of a percent, .25. And as you can see from that, the coverage ratios get below 1 in 2037 and just slightly below 1. So we're pretty comfortable there. If you use a half a percent, then they improve even further. And if you used 1% growth, then we don't ever get below 1 or even close.
How high do they go at 3%, Dave? The last 20-year average?
I did not plug that in.
Probably too big for the computer to calculate.
Well, if we use the 3% average, if, at 1%, you can see those numbers, if you tripled them sensually, that's where you'd be.
So we'd be in good shape.
We'd be in, yeah. We have coverage ratios of 3 or 4, 5%.
Okay, just laying some foundation for later.
So my only point telling you all that is we budgeted it very, very, very conservatively to make sure we didn't have any issues, and it doesn't appear that we do. And the Capital Improvement Committee recommended that we move forward with these projects. Anything I need to add to that, Dave?
Just, your deck, page 83 gives you the history by project of those estimates, and then the final, the 2124 bid column for each one are the final numbers. It includes, the first line is the Barn Hill guaranteed maximum price, and then all the other lines below are the budget items that are our responsibility. And those are going to be the budget you're going to be asked to approve in the next agenda item. And then finally, the last page, which is, I emailed this separately to you, and if anybody wants Caitlin Scott handouts of all the winning bidders for each project. So we did have two local, Suburban Electric and Hatchell Concrete, that each were on two of the three projects.
They're the only two that always show up, aren't they?
Yes, sir. We do have one from Williamson, one from Roper, and one from Currituck.
Make a motion to approve the preceding projects for 2024.
Second.
All right. Motion on the floor by Commissioner House. Did I hear a second from Commissioner Ross?
Yes, you did, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? With that being said, hearing none, those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
That brings us to item 13. Now that you have approved the projects, you have to approve a budget, and I'll turn that back over to Dave.
Yeah, this is two capital project ordinances. The first one is for these projects that you just approved. I've included a summary of the sources and uses of the funds. Section four gets rid of the budget you already had in place for these, which wasn't allocated to individual projects. We just had them in one group. Then section five, and I've got two section fives, it should be 5 and 5A, are the revenues and the expenditures for each of the projects. And if, one thing to note is, under the Mans Harbor project, I've got a deduct line of $955,000 because that is how much is coming from the second capital project ordinance, which is for the 23 projects, because we're going to draw $955,000 out of savings from those. So there's two ordinances to adopt, one for the 24 projects and one for the 23 projects.
Quick question for David.
Yes, absolutely.
The total in this budget is $28,505,000, give or take. And we just approved the prior resolution that had the projects totaling up to about 27. So I'm trying to make sure I understand the connection between the two.
This one is at the same as the prior. Two items later, we're doing the 28.5 in the resolution.
Right.
And that's a not-to-exceed amount?
So we don't have.
So if something blows up, or it's more for the structure of the bond sale?
Exactly. That's where I'm getting, okay, I'll wait for that part, Dave. Thank you. Let's wait for that.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Dave? Okay. Are we in a position to adopt the capital project ordinance for 2024 and the amendments to the 2023?
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave.
That brings us to item 14. Now that you've approved the project, you've approved the budget for the project, you now have to approve the contract with Barn Hill to move forward with the project. Dave, anything to add to that?
Yeah, it's just, technically, this is a change order to the first contract we had, and it's for $24,232,093 for the Barn Hill portion of the project.
Got it. Board.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman. Seconded by Commissioner House. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those then in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item 15 is the public hearing for the Series 2024 Limited Obligation Bonds. I'll let Dave tell you a little bit about what that is, and then I'll conduct the public hearing.
Okay.
This is just a required public hearing for the issuance of the bonds. It's one of the steps you have to take to get local government commission approval. It is to be held on the 2024 Limited Obligation Bonds and the 2024 projects specifically regarding the execution and delivery of the First Amendment and the 2024 projects financed thereby. The First Amendment means that we are mending the installment financing contract that we did last year for the first round of projects. So the 24 financing is amendment, is an amendment to the 23 financing.
With that, we, this matter's now on for public hearing. Hear comments with regard to the Series 2024 Limited Obligation Bonds and the capital projects to be financed thereby. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to that issue? Signal, anyone in Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we would close the public hearing.
All right. Anything else, Dave?
Yes, one more for me. That's item number 16. This is what we refer to as the initial resolution for the bonds. And first, I want to say, it has a not-to-exceed amount in there of $28,500,000. That is for two reasons. It's to provide you some pad in case something happens, say the board said, we want to add something to the projects between now and the bond sale date. But it's more for the structure of the bonds. Right now, we're selling bonds at a premium where if we sell a $5,000 bond, we're getting paid, say, $5,500 for it. And we, it lowers that bond amount. However, if that flipped to a discount based on the market, we'd maybe get $4,500 for a.
That's not happening, Dave.
For a $5,000 bond.
Yeah.
But it would require selling more bonds.
But we're, our coupon's five, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we're going to be bidding lower than that, so we're definitely going to go for premium.
Absolutely. I mean, there's prices up in the 120s.
Yeah, okay.
So the resolution is for these.
120s?
Yeah.
Wow.
20% premium, yes, sir.
Wow.
It's for the three projects that we've been talking about. And again, it's a not-to-exceed of 28.5. You just held a public hearing on it. The resolution says it's in the best interest of the county to enter into amendment number one to the 23 installment, 2023 installment financing contracts. And that pledging other properties, if necessary, is allowed. What's pledged under that contract is the Kill Devil Hills project and the Kill Devil Hills land. Honestly, if we need to pledge something else, it'll come from the rating agencies and they're, what they want to see based on, to maintain our rating. If that happens, probably it'll be the Kitty Hawk site because we found an issue with the Mans Harbor site related to an old federal grant from 1979. But right now, we don't think we're going to have to do that. The projects are essential and the county can finance them at favorable interest rates. As I said, the latest round in numbers is at an average rate of 3.57. The amount not to exceed is 28.5. The use of the amendment to the financing contract for the financing vehicles preferred is the more cost and time efficient option. It does say, any increase in property taxes, if any, will not be accepted. There is no increase in property taxes shown by our model. You will not need to do that. The county's taxing power is not pledged. The county's not in default in any of its debt service obligations. We're in compliance with Local Government and Fiscal Control Act. Per past audit reports, we have not been censured by the external auditors or the local government commission, and you just held a public hearing. It authorizes the county manager, the finance director, or our designees to proceed with the contract amendment. It directs the finance director to file an application with the local government commission, and it authorizes and directs the finance director to retain Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein as bond counsel, DEC Associates as our financial advisor, Bank of New York Mellon Trust as our trustee, and Piper Sandler as the underwriter. And I put a note in there, PNC Capital Markets will be a co-underwriter. And that is it, and you're requested to adopt that resolution.
Any questions, Dave? Any, is there a need to read the resolution? All right.
I've read it.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt by Commissioner Bateman. It's been seconded by the Vice Chair. And once again, the floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dave. A lot of hard work there.
And with that, that's all the legal requirements so that we can now move forward with those projects, so we're on go. Item 17 is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for February the 5th. We have the tax collector's report. We have the Dare County farm lease. We have the audit contract for the fiscal year to end June 30th. We have the government education access channels for 2024, '25 proposed budget. We have a lease agreement for the state highway patrol office in Kill Devil Hills. We have the Outer Banks Tennis Association and the Parks and Recreation MOU. And we have the Health and Human Services Public Health Division Medicaid Managed Care Budget Amendment.
Can I ask a question without throwing a wrench in your engine? On the, on the farm lease, did I remember we had a conversation that for some reason we want to use 30 acres of that land?
We can't.
We can't.
We can terminate it at our will with notice to allow him an opportunity to get his crops out of the field. So if we choose to use it, we can. Motion to approve consent agenda. Yes.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bassnight and Commissioner House. Any further discussion?
Just one quick question for county manager on the tennis association. That was kind of a new thing, and we've always been talking about all these fields that we're repairing and remediating and the construction of pickleball court. And I haven't seen much from tennis, but I noticed this in the consent agenda. Looked like a good.
So they have an opportunity to get grants from the USTA to do things, and they also have an opportunity to provide tennis programs that we don't have the staff or the talent, if you will, to do. And so it's a, it's a good thing for us. So we delegated some of that to them while keeping the control to manage the things that we need to manage, but also giving them court time to do things we would like to be able to do if we had the staff and the resources to do it. So it's a win-win for us and for people that recreate in the tennis area.
That's what I thought. I sit on the board of the Telet Center with Sandy Perry. She's the community coordinator listed here, and it looked like a good idea, and she hadn't mentioned it, but good. Glad to see it. Okay.
All right. That brings us to item 18.
We need to vote. We didn't vote.
Yeah.
We need a.
He, he's correct. We need, we need to vote. And those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. That brings us to item 18, and that's your board appointments. You have one board appointment on the older adult services board. Don Berg's term expired, and the council recommends his reappointment.
Need to reappoint.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to reappoint Don Berg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then for your upcoming board and committee appointments, in April, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring, the Mans Harbor Marina Commission with two terms expiring. In May, you have the Veterans Advisory Council with two terms expiring, and the Zoning Board of Adjustment with one term expiring. And then in June, you have the College of the Memorial Board Trustees with one term expiring, the Extraterritorial Jurisdiction for the Town of Southern Shores with one term expiring, the Fesident Center Advisory Board with four terms expiring, the Hatters Community Center Board with two terms expiring, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with five terms expiring, the Mans Harbor Community Center Board with two terms expiring, the Run Oak Island Community Center Board with two terms expiring, the Rodanthe Wave Salvo Community Center Board with two terms expiring, and the Waterways Commission with four terms expiring. And that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to, brings us to item 19, but prior to that, I'd like to respond to public comment. I see that Mrs. Palmer and Mr. Miller have left the meeting, but they bring some valid points. I know we've looked at this numerous times, but I would like for staff and yourself to, and even I'll go out as well, and I encourage my fellow commissioners, let's take another look at the swimming hole, just one more time, take a look at that.
Just for the benefit of the people listening, can I tell you a little bit?
Absolutely.
So the swimming hole, they were correct, has been there for a while, and we've had several drownings, the one she talked about, she said there was not a lifeguard there. We had another drowning when there was a lifeguard there. The lifeguard saved one and was not able to save another. There's a, as you go out, there's a big drop-off that's over your head deep. I mean, it's, I don't know, I haven't measured, I don't know if it's 10 feet deep or eight or six, but it's a deep drop-off that just drops off. And we've tried multiple ways to try to rope that area off, to try to make that area amenable to swimming, and we've failed. Anytime we have weather or anytime any currents change, it blows whatever we've put out there in the way of, of floats with weights, with buoys, with anchors, with whatever we've tried to do, we've really not been able to do that. There is some use out there, I wouldn't say it's substantial use, and so the question became, where you have an unsafe area that you really can't guarantee the safety and you can't guarantee that, and you've had people drown even with a lifeguard, is that an area where we should be encouraging people to come and to swim? And the ultimate answer was, no, that's not what we ought not to be encouraging people to come there and swim, and when you put a lifeguard there and you make it a swimming area, then you are saying, public come, public swim, it's safe, and it's where we encourage you to swim. And that did not appear to be the correct answer, at least when those decisions were made. If you all want to revisit that, then we can do that again. We looked at all kinds of ways to try to secure the area, to make it safe. We can go through that process once again if you'd like to do that.
Personally, I'd like for us to do it, just to make sure.
We've got a new director, and I'll have staff
We have a new director on board, and I think it would be wise of us to do that.
If we could make it work, the goal's not not to do it, the goal's to make sure it's safe.
Right. How about the foot of the Mans Harbor Bridge?
That's kind of what I was thinking, too. That's kind of what I was thinking.
The old Mans Harbor Bridge, where San Papper Kay used to be, there was a campground there, that was a swimming hole for a long time. I, you know, families used to go out there, sandy beach, on the, if you get into Mans Harbor, it's on the right-hand side, you know, big.
That's a state-owned property.
Everybody used to go out there and party at nighttime.
Absolutely, yeah.
They launch kayaks there now.
Yeah.
People launch kayaks there now.
Well, why can't they swim there?
Yeah. Well, it's certainly something we can look at.
Something we can look at. That's not our property, but we can have some
The other thing I was thinking about is, there's a northwest wind that's making that place over there, and Steve will tell you about this, that when northwest wind hits, it's going to erode, it's going to move everything that's in that area. I did a triathlon there one time, it was terocious, it was terrible.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a difficult site you're looking at.
It is.
It's an old airplane landing, it was where seaplanes came in, there's a ramp there, and to the, I get my direct, to the north, there was a dock, so there's a channel cut in there to go to an old, I think it might have been a ferry dock.
I think it was a ferry.
Way back, and so there's, there's that deep cut where that channel was, it's right in the area where people swim, and again, that's not, we haven't been able to find a way to protect people from falling in there when they swim there. So, but we'll, we'll go back and see if there's some other technique, and I'll get Spencer on that right away.
I was puzzled, one of the public commenters seemed really offended that we put someone in place to count and track usage of the swimming hole. I mean, it just seemed like a rational thing to do to
Well, as you're, you're spending resources to have a lifeguard, and if you had nobody swimming there, then you don't spend the resources. If you have a lot of people there, then maybe you need your lifeguard. So the idea was to try to track and see what the use was and how do we guard it appropriately.
It made perfect sense, I don't know why there was this offense or outrage.
What were the numbers?
I don't have them, I can give them to you, I don't remember. They were modern, it showed use, you know, there weren't people lining up there, but there was somebody there. There were lots of dead times, but there were times when people did in fact
There were a lot of just picnic parties and things of that, you know.
But the actual people that came there and swam, there were some that came daily in the warm weather.
Thank you, all right. Appreciate us looking into that. The other thing, Virginia, I can't, I can't remember her last name, the lady that brought up the poor conditions of the home near her, can we, can we send a letter to that property owner like we've done numerous times with other
And I, I'll take another, I didn't know that, was there, I'll get with Noah and find out where that is, and we'll take a look.
We don't know where it is.
There's some things we can do, some things we can't do. We don't have a minimum housing code, so from that level, we don't have enforcement. But if we've got some, a nuisance, some other things, there may be some other
Well, if you look at the photos, there's a lot of debris in the yard.
And we might can do something about that, but in terms of the actual living conditions in the house, if it
Right.
If it meets the building code and is eligible for an occupancy permit under the building code, then there's little we can do beyond that on the condition of the house, but with regard to the premises, that may be an avenue that we can tackle as well. So I'll have them look at that. She didn't give us an address, I'm not sure if I know where it is.
I don't know where it is.
But Noah will know if she's talking
Okay.
Anybody know where the house is located?
I remember the gentleman's name, we can GIs it.
Yeah, I can, we'll find it.
We'll find it.
Yeah.
And then last, Ms. Morgan brought up the fact that this board has been silent on 259. We, we passed the resolution unanimously in opposition to that, we've sent that to the legislature. For the last six months, we've addressed this numerous times, individually as board members, as well as a board, that we would not honor that. The county manager has been to monthly meetings with town managers, he has reiterated that with the town managers. I have monthly meetings with the mayors, I have reiterated that with the mayors for the last six months, that we would not honor that. And as a matter of fact, I've spoken at several municipalities, I just went to a retreat in Duck and reiterated that, that we will not agree to take away the sovereignty of those towns. So we've been outspoken about this numerous times. Another, another item she brought up was concerning Jockeys Ridge. This board has supported Jockeys Ridge and any endeavor that they've ever had, and we totally support them. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Rob meets with them on a regular basis, and he can address, I believe, the issue that is lingering out there. If you will attempt to address that for me, I appreciate.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, glad to. I first reached out to members of the legislature, senate and house, on January 13th, that was my initial contact. The contact was related to the Coastal Resources Commission having a dispute with the Rules Review Commission, which was created by the legislature in order to scan and review the very, very many hundreds of rules, regulations, and requirements put forth by the entire alphabet soup of state agencies, of which one happened to be uncovering Jockeys Ridge. The concern that was raised was, oh my God, the area of economic, environmental concern is going to be revoked. I raised this concern to members of the senate, and I was assured in no uncertain terms that this was not a Jockeys Ridge issue, it was simply part of a more broad and full review of rules that had been put in place, and that the CRC Coastal Resources Commission and the Rules Review Commission would resolve any discrepancies or differences of opinion about the rules, and that, no, there was no risk to the area of environmental concern designation, there was no intent to jeopardize the status of a protected state park at Jockeys Ridge, and no, we're not putting any Burger Kings or McDonald's on the top of the ridge. So I've also been involved on a number of issues with the Friends of Jockeys Ridge, the nonprofit referenced by the, the public speaker, and I'm a member of their committee to fund, create, and enact a June 2025 50th anniversary celebration event over three days. So I have spent considerable hours with the leadership of that group, Ms. Anne Cabellbaum and Mr. Craig Honeycutt. I would urge you to give them a call if you feel there's been no support from anyone on the board, because I can assure you, you will find it to the contrary. And that support has been unstopping and is in strong advocacy for funding both at the legislature and the county, and the celebration of that state park and its continued preservation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Ross. That brings us to board appointments, I mean, excuse me, to item 19, Commissioner's business and county manager's business. Bobby, do you have anything else for us today?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll bring up one accolade. We implemented a training process, first-on-the-scene training, a while ago, and we required all of our employees to take that training and to, and I think they all probably have by now, because it's been in effect for a while, so that with our 800 and some employees that are out and about all over the county, if they come upon a wreck or, or in a store or whatever, they can respond to a number of different things while we wait for EMS or whoever to get there. Some people kind of looked at us funny when we started doing that, but we felt like we could make a difference, and turns out we're right. Tracy Porter from the Tax Assessor's Office was in a restaurant last week or the week before last, and someone had a heart attack, and she used that training to stabilize that person
Yes, yes.
While we were waiting for the EMS to get there, and we had a good outcome. And so I wanted to commend her publicly to you all and to the public, and to the rest of our folks, to commend them for, for taking that training. I've taken it, everybody's taken it, and it's excellent, and it does make a difference. And so I'm real proud of the program that we, we put in place for that. As you know, we've had some discussions about our various septic tank issues with the change in the, in the new rules. Those changes in the rules have made things very difficult for us and for our, our sanitarians or our, our environmental folks. I was, met with Josh and Sheila, I don't know, Sheila, last week, week, there you are, about, last week about it. I'll just give you one example of some of the problems the legislation has caused. One of the problems is that you have a repair area, under the old rules, if your septic tank failed, you could go to where the failed septic drain field was, you could dig all that out, clean it all out, you could replace it with clean sand, clean gravel, and you could replace your septic tank drain field in that area. I had that done at my house a couple of years ago, it was a $7,000 repair. You have a repair area in, in my case, it's in the backyard, but we had a lady that has a repair area, and now they're saying you can't do that any longer, you have to use the repair area that's designated in some other part of your yard. That then increases the expense, in my case, you would have had to pipe it all the way out and pump it to the backyard, I don't know what that would have cost, I didn't price it. But even worse than that, if your repair area in the backyard is too small, then you have to go to one of the new package plants. And that, we had an example, that's a $60,000 repair, that took a lady's repair from $7,000 to $60,000.
10 to 12 grand per bedroom for an engineered system, yes, it is.
And so, and, and that changed in January, until January this year, you could have simply replaced it, everything's fine, it works, it's, it's always worked, and for whatever reason, the legislature changed that. There are some other similar examples, there's, there's things where the person, the, from environmental health can use best professional judgment to try to make things that don't fit just right, the rules don't make sense, to make it safe and do things, that kind of eliminated the ability for those folks to use that kind of judgment as well. So there's been a lobbying effort done, Sheila and her team have, have met with our home builders, and the state home builders have been involved as well. Part of the problems are a little bit unique to us. Other communities, you know, when you go to a rural county in a subdivision that's out in the middle of a farm with a big lot, then they don't have, they just move it over a few, they don't have these kind of problems, but when you're, you have compact lots, nowhere to grow, you know, you're, you're built out, then all of a sudden, it, it's creating problems for us. Upshot is, is that we're working, we believe they're going to change that, those rules, there's been some discussions and some legislation put, passed around, the State Home Builders Association is working on that as well. We wanted to get behind that as well and get our lobbyists involved with the home builders to, to, the state home builders association as well as the local home builders to try to move that legislation through, and I needed your permission to bring that to our lobbyists, and then your permission for, if we need it, for the chairman to sign a letter or sign a resolution or whatever we might need to push forward those changes that solve those problems that we just, that I just addressed. Sheila, is there anything else I need to add to that?
I think we did provide a draft resolution.
Okay.
Sheila, where was the origination of this NC 15A, NC AC Subchapter 18E? Do we know where that originated?
Well, the state has been working for a number of years on, on overall revision to these rules, so the master revision was not a surprise, but as often happens, right before adoption, things get tweaked or changed, and that, some of the aspects of these rule changes were a surprise. As Josh has indicated, and we, we talked about this item extensively at our Health and Human Services Board meeting last Tuesday night, there are some positive improvements in the overall changes to the, the rules, but the ones that carry a lot of negative impact are the ones that we've mentioned in this resolution that need to be changed, hopefully in the short session. And they're the ones that Bobby just indicated.
Restricting best professional judgment, that's insane to do that, that is simply wrong. All right.
Absolutely.
All right, we agree, yes, sir.
So the people who sell these package plants?
Yeah.
They're the ones driving the boat.
Well, that's where I was at, I didn't want to put Sheila on the spot, but I suspect that they were
I'll tell you, and
They were driving the boat, yeah.
The package plant that we have?
Yeah.
It costs roughly speaking $12,000 a year to have someone come in and manage that package plant. It cost $79,000 to put that plant in 15 years ago. So they're, they're the people driving the boat, they're the lobbyists that went to the senate and the house
I was going to say
And got these stupid things passed.
Yeah, nobody dreamed this up in the legislature without a lot of help from somebody with a vested interest.
Well, it probably, it probably seems okay when you're, when you're, you know, the, the, the big voting blocks up there are in places like Mecklenburg County, Guilford County, you know, Winston-Salem, where, where you're not worried about this, but in our situation, and particularly as it gets back to the smaller lots, it's devastating.
It is.
I mean, when we've had, when we've had two applications here, and one of them cost $60,000 for a lady, and the other one was $40,000, I mean, it tells you pretty quick something needs to be done, it's, it's untenable.
And I've just, I've talked with the townspeople, I talked with NAGS Ed on Friday, and they're kind of asking what could they do to help do this, and so they'll follow our lead, I expect, on this as well.
We've got a BOC version of that resolution, you want to take the time to go, go read that, Bobby? And then we can, we can move on that.
Great.
All right, this is a resolution to support modifications to NC 15A, NC AC Subchapter 18E. Whereas Dare County is a coastal community where the vast majority of residential dwellings utilize onsite wastewater treatment and dispersal systems. And whereas Dare County is unique in the amount and type of land available and requires all avenues for consideration to best address onsite wastewater system configurations and repair options. And whereas Dare County does not have large standardized uniform subdivisions, and instead has countless uniquely configured properties with many small lots, i.e. 5,000 square feet, and some with water on three sides. And whereas several of the local municipalities have passed local ordinances restricting the cutting down of oak trees and other vegetations, which puts enforcement of the 2023 rule change in conflict with town ordinances. And whereas the complying with the 2023 rule changes may present undue financial hardships on numerous property owners, which may discourage them from applying for repair permits to address damaged systems, or potentially attempting other unapproved solutions which will be much worse environmentally. And whereas the Dare County Department of Health and Human Services employs professional qualified registered environmental health specialists who are authorized by the state of North Carolina in onsite wastewater and private wells, and have used best professional judgment for over 40 years to determine effective onsite system configurations and solutions. Therefore, be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Health and Human Services, in this case Dare County, respectfully requests the North Carolina General Assembly modify NC 15A, NC AC Subchapter 18E, Wastewater Treatment and Dispersal Systems, Section 100, Section 0100, general, in the short session of 2024, by clearly stating that the rules adopted in 2023 are not to be retroactive in any capacity, including malfunctions, and that registered environmental health specialists have unrestricted best professional judgment for addressing onsite wastewater system and wastewater system malfunction for which IPCA, OP, NOI, ATO, Certificate of Completion, or any other equivalent approval has been issued prior to January 1st, 2024. or any other equivalent approval has been issued prior to January 1st, 2024. Therefore, be it resolved that additional modifications to the 2023 rules be made to remove the requirement of five-foot setbacks to underground utilities and to remove the requirement of the fire marshal determining the maximum occupancy of an event building for a commercial structure prior to designing a system. The 2023 rule changes should be amended to allow 467 and 57 gravel to be approved. Legislative changes should also be made to allow for improvement permits issued with engineering site plans prepared and AutoCAD software to be non-expiring.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman. It's been seconded by Commissioner House for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Sheila, thank you so much for drafting these.
Just as a follow-up, the Dare County Board of Commissioners has a resolution, and then the, and then the Health Department has a.
I read the Health Department because it was on the top.
A second resolution, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And gathering by that approval that I'm also authorized to get our lobbyists involved as well.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And then we'll share this with the towns if they want to take.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you very much.
And then the last thing I have, Mr. Chairman. The Stumpy Point Fire Department has an opportunity to get a grant for some, I think it's for some turnout gear and some radios. And they, the grant is a reimbursement grant, so they have to go buy the stuff and then get reimbursed for it. Well, they don't have enough money to buy all that stuff. And so in order for them to do that, we would have to front the money or loan the money to them to buy that equipment. And then upon reimbursement, those funds would come back to us from the grant. We're authorized to loan the fire department that money to do that. So I need approval to loan them not to exceed $25,000 for them to purchase radios and turnout gear, subject to an MOU requiring their reimbursement.
So moved, that's a hardship for them.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. Our Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, is out of town, but we have Ms. Caitlin here with us this morning. Thank you, Ms. Caitlin, for being here.
Yes, happy to be here.
Do you have anything to share with us?
I do have four dates I'd like to share, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
We have a busy month, so the first thing I'd like to mention is the Special Olympics Polar Plunge, which will take place this Saturday at Jeanette's Pier. Individuals can still register to plunge. You can make a donation online, you can sign up to volunteer, and all of that information is listed at darenc.gov/polarplunge. So definitely check out that website and get involved. They're trying to raise 50,000 for our local athletes, and they're currently at about 40, so they're getting there.
Wow.
How much did they raise last year, do you know, Caitlin?
It wasn't even close. I think it was under 20.
12.
12, yeah. I was going to say 18, but 12, okay.
Now they're at 40.
And I think they had.
They're going crazy, they're so excited. What's that, Danny?
It's all because of you and those.
No, 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 I just watch them and cheer them on, that's all.
You can, you can register the day of, even onsite.
Okay.
So you can show up and plunge. Registration begins at 10:00 AM. The first plunge will begin at 11:30. They're doing three rounds this year because there are over 300 plungers.
Wow.
There's normally 30 to 50, so this is record-breaking.
302. Mary Pendle and I were in two weeks ago.
That's right.
That's right.
I saw your picture.
Uh-oh.
Then the next event we have coming up is EMS Station 4 in Southern Shores, our ribbon cutting and open house. So that will take place Friday, March 15th. The ribbon cutting will be at 1:30, and then the open house from 2 to 6. And the training that our county manager mentioned, EMS conducted for Dare County employees, they'll be offering short versions of that. So they'll be offering free, hands-free CPR training to the public, stop-to-bleed training, and they'll also perform blood pressure checks. And we'll have refreshments and tours, so we invite the public to attend that open house on Friday, the 15th of March. Then the third event, our Large Item Pickup for Unincorporated Dare will begin on March 18th. So our unincorporated residents can begin placing their items the 17th. No later than the 18th, place your items by the road. And more information about the items that will be collected can be found at darenc.gov/largeitempickup. And then the final thing I'd like to mention is our Outer Banks Senior Games registration ends on March 21st. The games will begin on April 15th, and the Silver Arts also. Find more information at darenc.gov/seniorgames. Thank you, Chairman.
Great, thank you for that info, Caitlin. Very good, appreciate it. Mr. Clausen, anything else for the good of the board today?
Yes, I want to mention a couple of things. Well, Barnhill has a construction trailer at Mans Harbor on March 12th. The Manio Youth Center demo, demolition of the building will be sometime between the middle of March and the end of March, depending upon when we get the permit back from the state. I didn't mention, we'll need a Public Facilities Corporation meeting on April 1st, so that's the chairman and the vice chairman. We can do that before the meeting.
Okay.
And then I think we're okay with the Dare, the med flight ribbon cutting we're looking at after the May board meeting, the same day.
Great.
Dave, what'd you say, that on the 12th of March, was the Manio Youth Center set up?
No, the 12th of March is Barnhill's going to move their construction trailer, actually from Killaville Hills over to Mans Harbor.
Oh, Mans Harbor.
Yeah, to the Mans Harbor.
Got you, got you.
Caitlin, with that ribbon cutting, remember that we moved the board meeting from Monday to Tuesday because we originally planned the meeting for that Monday, so we need to make sure.
That'll be May 6th.
That's right, it's May 6th.
Okay.
I think originally we thought it would take place after the board meeting, but it'll be the day before.
Okay.
Well, we can do whatever.
Thanks again, guys. My apologies, I failed to recognize that we have two of our fine Board of Education representatives is here today. Thank y'all for being here, Mr. Boswell and Mary Ellen Balance. Thank y'all. I apologize for not mentioning you at the beginning of the meeting, but y'all have been patiently sitting through our meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate what you do on the Board of Education. That brings to our Board of Commissioners. And Commissioner Bateman, you man kicking it off today?
I do not. We lost Teddy Hawker last Thursday. Mr. BB Wise, big giver in the community, called him Big Daddy. He's a woodworker, he was a fisherman, he was a hunter, just a great guy. And he passed away at a very, very, very young age. From the recovery community, we had our first student enroll in COA from Dare Challenge.
Oh, super.
Yeah, he's in the automotive program through RD Sawyers.
Fantastic.
Excellent opportunity, and he's so excited. I called, I called him up and congratulated him being a college student, and it was just amazing, his gratitude and so forth. So this board's actions are working. Furthermore, that this board's actions are working, I invite each one of you guys at some time to come to Recovery Court. It's amazing what they do there. They've implemented a chip system similar as they do in AA. And where the individual, when they're called up in front of the judge, they'll also announce their sobriety time. And we had guys there nine months, seven months. And for someone to be in a courtroom setting and be acknowledged for their sobriety when they're in their position that they were when they first came in the program, it's amazing, they're so proud. Everybody claps and cheers them on, and it's really, it's working, it's really working. We have some folks that are struggling, but we're going to have that. We're going to have some that they're going to fail. But all in all, the program is doing a very good job. Jerry Tillot's doing a great job as a judge. Kevin Dixon is serving as a recovery coordinator and doing a super job. He's the one implemented this chip system, so. That was a great thing. On 27th, just a quick PSA, Jersey Mike's, if you go there, every sub that you buy, every proceed will go to Dare, to Outer Banks Relief Foundation, which helps people with debilitating diseases. So far this year, we've given away $500,000 to people. So all your money that you spend there at Jersey Mike's on the 27th this month will go back to that organization for them to give away more money to people who need it. And of course, you stole my thing about the polar plunge. Come out there and see my fat butt get wet. I will be there. I know Commissioner Ross has already done it. Hamatcha, are you going to be there?
Already done it.
You're already done, okay. And I challenge the rest of the commissioners on this board, if you so choose, to come out there with me and get wet.
What's the date again?
March 9th.
9th, Saturday.
That would be coming Saturday, this week.
What time are you doing, it's three times?
I don't know, I haven't even registered yet, but I'm going to be there.
Okay, now I'm going to get wet. Say that again.
I'm probably going to be one of the early ones, try to be.
Punch times are 11:30, 11:40, and 11:50, but registration at 10:00 AM, so.
I'll tell you, wherever you really want to impress me, do all three.
The water was, I think it was 51 the day that we went in, so it was, got your attention, got your attention.
Can you do just feet for us, just feet? The whole thing?
Head under the water, be.
All right.
I told the story one time, I said I tried to impress my wife today of who was, I've been married for 50 years, if I make it to the 22nd of May. And I tried to impress her on my first date, went surfing in front of her in the 1st of March, and fell off my board like I drowned. The current got me, took me clear on down to the beach. It was bad, but I survived.
When she came to get you, you knew she was the one, right?
She didn't know nothing happened.
Guys, they partnered this year with the law enforcement.
She thought that was planned.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir. I've got something very concerning. It's not just from an environmental standpoint, but from a public safety standpoint as well as a lot of people on the board and the community knows. From 1956 to 1982, about a 26-year period, the United States Navy operated a submarine tracking station right there under the shadow of the lighthouse. And the original agreement was, when the Park Service, when the Cape Hatteras National Seashore was established in 1953, is when the Navy bailed, they would restore it to its original condition, to its original national park condition. It was turned over to the Coast Guard, so somewhere in that, in that transition, it did not get cleaned up fully. And I'd like to ask Pam, if you would, to queue up some pictures. Here we go. All right, you can see underneath the red stripe, red line on the oceanfront, the little blue dot, that's where the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse used to be. All right, now, why should we be concerned about the closing of this beach here? I'll tell you why, because it's not a good look for a national seashore to have houses falling in, one section of them up in Rhode Anthony, and then to have crime tape around what is essentially the Number Four Beach in the United States, according to Dr. Stephen Leatherman, who goes by the name Dr. Beach Race and Nations Beaches. We're known nationally and internationally for our beaches here. But what has happened in the past few storms in this, just let me back up here a minute. This is part of the Cape Hatteras, it's called the Buxton Beach Access. You can see the little circle just to the left of the northern end of the red stripe. That's a Buxton Day use area. The Park Service have proposed and put up some money there to establish a beach access similar to what they have at Salvo Day Use, similar to the Hallover, and similar to what they have at Sandy Bay down between Frisco and Hatteras. And low and behold, now we've got an issue after two passing hurricanes, and it's pretty bad storm systems passing by. A lot of the debris has been coming up. Pam, if we could do the next one? All right, this is the kind of stuff in the Number Four Beach in the United States that is showing up in the water. This, what you're looking at here is the remnants of the T Building that was where there was a bank of radars in there, tracking during the Cold War and into the early 60s, the movement of Soviet-era diesel subs along the East Coast. When that technology started to go out, it was actually either the Chinese or the Japanese had figured out that we were, the United States Navy, with about a 13-mile-long stainless steel cable that went straight out toward Diamond Shoals. They were emitting signals that were reminiscent, artificial signals that mimicked what humpback whales use to communicate from the Arctic and the Antarctic. A whale up at the northern, North Pole could communicate with a whale on the South Pole. We had been able to do that artificially. Other countries started to figure it out, but fortunately, with the United States being a technological leader, we had already moved to satellite, so we were one step ahead of the game. So this whole cable essentially became, for the most part, obsolete. Now, the site was declared part of the formerly used defense sites, that's the Army Corps, and they did a lot of good in there, but they did not get it all. This, this right here, things like this with cables, rebar, concrete blocks, those are not cinder blocks, they're concrete blocks. And then, of course, foundational components there that, folks, it's just dangerous. That is a dangerous thing for public safety right there. Pam, can we move? Okay. So here's a little bit larger. You can see down there where the red, red pole is there. That's the bigger, and I'll just add that you can see, well, I was hoping that that stainless steel cable was visible, but it is not. But that is just, that's, I mean, the surf's out there, that is a very popular surfing area there. You're looking just to the right of the screen there, I mean, that's about a four-foot beautiful offshore wave there. It is a gorgeous, gorgeous beach. It's right in an area there where we've committed to preserving infrastructure, the highway there. So if we could go to the next one, okay? This is down closer toward the lighthouse, still the same beach, all under the shadow of the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse. You're looking at petroleum peat. You can go there with a boot or break off a piece of, and you're going to start smelling petroleum byproducts, benzene, things like that. You've got some old sandbags, you've got all sorts of sand fences and various things that have been efforts to protect the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse and to protect that Navy base. When those drawings were put in, folks, back in the 70s, 68 through 70, they were not to protect the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse, they were to protect that submarine tracking station. Okay, so between the mess that's going on up in, ooh, I love this. Okay, here's, here's a shot of, this was about 1966. And I say that because if you look to the left of the screen, you'll see the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse, and there's the shadow reaching off to the northwest. But if you come to the Cape Hatteras Lighthouse and head for the oceanfront, you'll see a little, just to the left of the fill road there, you'll see the old observation deck. That observation deck came out in 1968 with one of the storms. So here is this station at the height of its utility for national defense. If you move to the north, you can see where the Scotch tape, we tried stitching this together, where the little Scotch tape, the browning and the yellowing of the Scotch tape there. That building right there, closest to the lighthouse, that was the old Driftwood Club. All right, now, just there is a tower there that was used for communication. But if you look to, if you continue north, you'll see the T Building there. That's the terminal building. There's a bank of radars in there where we knew wherever sub was. If you remember the Bay of Pigs invasion, I have had it told to me by a man who worked in there that that was one of the things that the Kennedy administration and the Khrushchev administration, that was a blinking moment when the whole thing going on with the Bay of Pigs crisis down in Cuba. So that place has served us well. Now, the pond there, that you see, the dark spot there, that's the good reference for us because now the ocean is very close in there. And what you're seeing on those debris photos is, of course, the infrastructure, the old T Building. Folks, it's as simple as this. The United States Army Corps of Engineers, they got in there, they got started on it. They did not finish the job, they've been called back out, and now they're saying that they cannot find the source. Folks, there's the source right there. You see the pipe coming out of there? It's since broken off since the system we had go by the third week of February. That pipe is now broken off. But you can literally, when the water table comes up, when the ocean, ocean's up, the top tide sea coming up, you can smell the fuel coming out of there. The fuel has gotten in, fuel rises to the top on the groundwater table. And so when the water, water table rises, you've got this huge smell and it's emitting oil out there. You've got surfers who are rashed, you've got kids who are in there playing around. I don't care how much crime tape and how many signs you've got to say, keep out. They're not going to keep out. You can say, do not enter, they're going to enter. That's the way it is with that. Here's another shot. This is looking from the lighthouse. There's the T Building straight up. So folks, we've got a resolution here. I don't know if we want to read it, I prefer that we don't because.
Commissioner Couch?
Yes. Yes.
I agree with that.
All right, bring it.
It's three pages.
Thank you. I'm just getting started, Rob. Okay, all right.
You said the public's aware.
Yes, sir, they are.
We, the vice chairman, myself, and the county manager hid in the DC. This will be one of our top subject matters when we meet with our legislators at the end of the month.
Okay. Yeah. Need a motion to approve the resolution. So move.
All right, are you presenting that as a resolution for us to approve, Dan?
Yes, sir. It's a public safety concern.
It's been, is a motion on the floor about a vice chairman, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman.
Thank you.
And the floor is open for further discussion.
I'm just curious, if this exact scenario had washed up on the beaches of, I don't know, Martha's Vineyard or the Hamptons on Long Island, would we still be begging, pleading for someone to please remediate this dangerous and unhealthy situation? Just a question. Just a question, Mary Ellen.
All right, any further comments?
Just thank you to Department of Health and Human Services, also our public information, this board, our county manager, a lot of people weighed in on this resolution, and it's effective.
Thank you.
Good luck in Washington.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Couch.
Thank you. That's all I have.
So those in favor then of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bassnight?
Yes, sir. Had some exciting news from the Dare County, or the Manio Healthcare Task Force, that we will have a Perceptor Hub in Dare and Hyde Counties starting in September, where medical students from UNC Chapel Hill will be coming to learn from our medical personnel here, and physician assistant students will be coming from Elon, from Campbell, and from Wake Forest University. So that's a very exciting step forward to try to train medical personnel who will come to love the Outer Banks like we do and hopefully come back and settle here and practice their Caitlin mentioned the senior games. I am on the older adult services board, went to my first meeting, and we're so fortunate to have the Festin Center, the Virginia Tillot Center, and the Baum Center, and they're all over the senior games, so they have all kinds of activities. If anybody's interested, register for those. Things like pickleball, painting.
Pickleball.
I thought I'd like that one. Crafts, basket weaving, there's, there are so many things you can do. I thought when the commissioners went to Mans Harbor Community to talk with them and listen to their concerns was a very positive meeting. It gave us a chance to list, really listen and to answer a lot of the questions. I wanna commend our county manager, Bobby Outen, who did such an amazing job explaining all the things about EMS rules and the construction of their new EMS building and their fire department. So thank you, Bobby, for doing that. We appreciate it. I also want to acknowledge the passing of longtime friend of Dare County, Ray White. He served, was one of the founding members of the Outer Banks Community Foundation, served as the chairman of the Dare County ABC Board for, I believe, 49 years.
What do you mean?
Amazing, and he certainly will be missed. And just a couple of other things. Chairman Wood and I attended a full-day board retreat for the Dare County Arts Council, and they too will be celebrating their 50th anniversary in 2025, along with Jockeys Ridge, and are looking at a partnership. And I certainly encourage all of our board to support that when they come to us and ask for support, because it'll be a great celebration if it's Arts Council, Dare Arts it's called now. It'll be a year-long celebration and probably the same, Rob, with Jockeys Ridge, the friends of Jockeys Ridge. And last, this is Read Across America Week for our schools. They're celebrating, the actual birthday of Dr. Seuss was March 2nd, but they're celebrating this, this week, and so I encourage you to go out and read. I went to the kindergarten at Manio Elementary School Friday and read, and I'm going again this week to read to another class. And so I encourage you to read a book with somebody this week. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel a little bit like town, like a town crier here this morning. On March 12th, big day, Outer Banks Community Foundation Annual Meeting at Jeanette's Pier at 11:30. Should be very interesting. Two days later, on the 14th, at the Ramada, there will be a State of the Child Conference being conducted from 9:00 to 3:00. I'll be attending that one as well. On the 18th, an item of key interest to all of us, there will be a Public Insurance Forum with Commissioner Cozy here at the Tillot Center at 2:00. That's the 18th. I suspect there will be quite a crowd gathered for that one. On the 19th, the Chamber of Commerce has their Economic Summit. They do this once a year, a breakfast at the Ramada Inn, and feature a review of state as well as regional and local activity, legislation, trends in economics, or the economic development of the region and the state. And we typically see a very, very good report guard coming out of Charlotte or Raleigh, both. Finally, on the 23rd, this is a big deal too, pay attention, everybody write this down. OBX Health, our hospital and a local OBX Health, holding a big gala at Duckwoods Country Club. County manager, that would be your club, sir. So it's a very, very exciting event. It's another fundraiser to help our hospital and local medical community. It's from 6:00 to midnight, which is a long time for some of us. But I would urge you to look into it. OBX Health Gala, Duckwoods on the 23rd. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Commissioner House?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past, a week or so ago, you mentioned it in your opening comments about the fire we had in Mans Harbor, with being involved in emergency services for quite a number of years, kind of more than I wanted to mention, in Dare County. If I'm not mistaken, this is either the first or the second fifth alarm fire we've ever had in the county. What makes it more impressive, at the same time all of this happened within an hour, we had the fifth alarm fire going on, we had a three-car accident and with injuries in Kitty Hawk, followed by a two-car accident in Kitty Hawk with injuries, and also in Killover Hills, we had a natural gas leak. All that within an hour of that call. And all of those instances were handled to the utmost professional and quick responses. And I can't say enough about our emergency services here on the Outer Banks. They do an outstanding job. This past week also, I took both of our resolutions to the North County Marine Fisheries Commission. Both of our resolutions were presented to them. On the striped mullet, they decided not to table it, and I understand why, because the resolution they had, the proclamation they had actually closed striped mullets for two, for two months, whereas the striped mullet proposal from the Division of Marine Fisheries wanted to do a weekend closure all year instead of just doing it in two months, and that was in agreeance with a lot of our bait and tackle shops. One thing I can say about it though, and it was brought up in the commission meeting, and I'll put this out there as a, maybe a warning to everybody, if you go to a tackle shop and you buy a striped mullet for bait, and you have that on your boat on the weekend, I strongly urge you to have that receipt with you. Because the weekend closures, if you have any striped mullet on your vessel, you are in violation and can get ticketed. So please, if you're gonna do that, have your, have your receipt with you, and that might help alleviate a ticket. The commission meeting in Dare County resolution, which was given to them, was pretty much immediately disposed of. The chairman said that he had no intense, intent of doing a meeting in Dare County, stating that it would be unfair for the Division of Marine Fisheries staff who are, who are single parents or to that nature to travel this far to have a meeting either here in Dare County or in Wilmington. Also to the fact that it's also more cumbersome from, like from us from Dare County to go to a meeting down in Wilmington and vice versa for the Wilmington people to come up to Dare County for a meeting. I did reiterate to him during that meeting that the original intent of the 1997 Fisheries Reform Act was to have one meeting in Raleigh, and the other three, the way it's written is in the coastal regions. And I did let him know that it was in the, the intent of that was to have one in each one of the regions and not just one. But that has been, the chairman has said he does not have any plans to have a meeting in Dare County or in Wilmington, and to have them simply in the central part of the state. The Division of Marine Fisheries Commission on March 20th in New Bern will have a flounder symposium. So it'll give us a complete update on what the stock masses are in the flounders and exactly what's going on with that species. Hoping I can attend to that, or at least I've got a couple of people that will attend that will let me know what's going on with it. The South Atlantic Fishery Management Council, it's our federal fishery, they have asked to have their meeting here, which we approved, April 4th at 6:00 PM, in this very room. So we can get the federal fisheries here, but we can't get our state fisheries here. So Ms. Katie is down in Hatteras right now, working down there, and trying to help the situation there, and she should be there for about another week to two weeks, then she'll come back down to Oregon. Our day in history. In the prayer this morning, our minister thanked our good Lord for letting us govern ourselves. The Congress of the United States, established by the new Constitution, met for the first time in New York City's Federal Hall on March 4th, 1789. And that was probably the most important, important congressional meeting held, because that pretty much put the, the baselines for everything else that we've done since then in that one Congress. And for the enjoyment of, of all of our commissioners meeting, met Pet of the Week, Nala.
Our Pet of the Week this week is Nala. Meet Nala. She's a little over two years old and has the spunkiest personality. Nala was surrendered into our care because her family was moving and they couldn't take her with them. Nala is nervous in this environment, but with some love and patience, she completely shows you her amazing personality. We think Nala would work best as the only animal in a home. She loves snuggles, playing fetch, and doing somersaults. To adopt Nala or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So please go down to SPCA and pick up Nala and give her a forever home. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner House. Vice Chairman?
Thanks, Chairman. Don't have much today. I do want to congratulate our service pin recipients, Stephanie and Corinne, for their 30 years of service at Dare County. As always, we couldn't do it without them. Want to say that I'm looking forward to working and delivering meals for the Meals on Wheels on Wednesday. Everybody, I'm sure, has received the invitation to do that. I have done it before, and it is, it is quite satisfying, and I encourage you to do it if you get the opportunity. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Anyone else have anything else for the good of the board today? If not, we need a motion to adjourn until April 2nd.
So move.
It's a motion on the floor about Commissioner House. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bassnight. Any further questions, I mean, comments? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.